Okay, thanks for coming out today. First off, I'd like to thank the Pine Ridge Civic Association for handling the logistics and putting the forum together for us today, the actual physical plan. And just for everybody's, we've got in the back, if you're interested in signing up for civics, we've got applications back there, as well as signup sheets for stay in touch and electronic voting, if you would get your name on those lists if you're not signed up already. And we'll get an email out on how to do that. I'd also like to thank Bill Hunter and the External Affairs Committee for working to put this together and coming up crafting the format for the forum. And also Brenda Roberts will act as our moderator, as well as Sue Wassman and Bill Miller for the roles they'll be playing today. And additionally, I'd like to thank all of you for coming out today. This is coming out and picking the people that are going to benefit Pine Ridge the most. I mean, I appreciate you doing that. And so lastly, I'll thank the candidates, not at the least, but thanks for coming and putting on your best face for us, okay? All right, I'll turn this over to Brenda Roberts, and she'll be running the show from here on out.
Thank you, John. Okay, let me get this real close so everybody could hear me. As he said, I'm Brenda Roberts, I'm going to moderate the program today. I have a little statement I want to read, plus additional things that I just got now. Thank you, candidates, for coming to our forum today. We really appreciate it. Pine Ridge residents really want to know all about you for their, to make a intelligent vote, let's say. To the Zoom people listening on Zoom, this is being recorded and will be available next week on the Pine Ridge website. Helping me today with timing is Helen Vander Walker. Hold your sign up. There's the sign, 10 seconds left, 30 seconds left, all right? After 10 seconds, you will stop talking. In the next K and date, we'll talk. So time is limited today to approximately two hours and end promptly at 6:00 PM. Questions to be asked were previously submitted by Pine Ridge residents, and there will be no questions from the audience attending this event, nor any Zoom participants at this time. Zoom participants can read transcript live. If you go on the, if you're in Zoom and you go to the buttons on the bottom, go to live transcript and then subtitles, and it'll have live, like showing on the, right now, closed captioning on the bottom, or however your computer shows it. The order of introductions will be alphabetical by district number. The candidate at the far left will speak first, followed by the candidate to the right, and so on till all candidates have spoken. There will be a strict time limit of three minutes for opening statements. At 30 seconds of time left, the timer, Helen, will show the yellow time limit sign for the candidate to wrap up their introduction. At 10 seconds of time left, the timer will show the red limit sign, and when the time has expired, the moderator will stop the candidate and move on to the next candidate to speak. Yeah. This format will be used for question-to-answer period with the exception, candidates will only have two minutes to answer the question presented. Following these instructions, opening statements will begin. Next, after opening statements, will be questions asked by Sue and Bill from previously submitted questions from the Pine Ridge website. Candidates will be asked the same question each and have two minutes to respond before moving on to the next candidate. The order of candidates will be round robin with rotation to the next candidate at each new question. The moderator will announce the next candidate to speak at each new question. Each candidate will have two minutes to answer his question. Pending time constraints, there will be a shotgun round where one question will be asked only to one candidate who will have one minute to answer. The moderator has sole discretion of any rebuttal requested, and only 30 seconds will be allowed for this rebuttal. At 5:45, questions will end and closing statements will begin. Candidates will have two minutes for a closing statement in order of the opening statements, which is left to right. Any questions on those procedures? All right, questioning can begin with the far left. Oh, by the way, when you're talking, turn on the microphone. When you're not talking, turn it off to avoid feedback.
Are you wanting me to do my introduction now?
How about now?
Yes, you'll have, the introductions are starting now.
Okay. Hi, everybody. Thanks for coming out. I'm Diana Finnegan, and I'm running for Citrus County Commission, District Two. Some people, when they got here, said, why, why you? Why should we vote for you? And I tell them, because I have experience. I have 25 years of proven leadership experience right here in Citrus County that's been documented throughout this, throughout my, really, my adult life. I started out young, very young, as the CEO of CASA, which that's our Domestic Violence Center here in Citrus County. And I took that from a very small, not very well-respected, and it should have been nonprofit, and grew it into what it is today. So when I got there, I realized that we could do better. We needed a bigger and safer shelter. We needed better services in Citrus County, and we needed to be solvent, because I am a stickler and a budget person as a conservative. So I accomplished all those goals. We built a brand-new 10,000-square-foot shelter, which I raised the money for. That was your tax dollars that I brought back to Citrus County to the tune of $1.2 million. And, sorry about that. And we started new programs here. I have experience as a leader, working with other people. I put programs in the school systems for healthy relationships, started partnering with the Sheriff's Office and DCF, and then I created a leadership team with all the leaders in mental health and child protection, law enforcement, and domestic violence, so we could stop domestic violence and the intersection of child abuse. So after I left CASA, because I accomplished those things, new shelter, solvent, and all these great new programs in Citrus County, I started working part-time with my husband, Steve, at Air Effects and Electrics. And I know Steve is way more popular than I am, and everybody was asking about him. So Steve has entered the building, everybody. He is sitting in the back of the room. So if you need to see him, he's here. All right, enough about you. This is my time, honey. And then I ended up back at county commissioner meetings. I attended those meetings when I was with CASA, usually because I was trying to get funding. But living in Homosassa, I'm very much into that community, and in civic clubs, river restoration projects, I ended at the county commissioner meetings and thought, wow, I can really make a difference here. All my budget experience, working with people, I saw some issues, I still see some issues, and I know we can fix them. So I would appreciate your vote on August 23rd to be your next District Two County Commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you, Diana. All right, yes, next can start. Make sure your microphone, the other microphone's off.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much to all the Pine Ridge residents who came out today, and for the POA for putting on this candidate forum, so people can get to know their county commission candidates. I am Stacy Worthington, candidate for County Commission, District Two, also. That's where I grew up, and I graduated from Crystal River High School. After that, I moved away for college and career, but my parents still lived in Citrus County, and my roots brought me home. I moved back and married my husband, and we own and operate a small business. And I've been in the private sector for all of my life, but as business owners, it has always been very important to us to give back to the community that provides for us. And so we are very involved. I am a member of the Boys and Girls Club's Board of Directors. My husband is also along with me. And I served on the board of the Citrus County Building Alliance, and I was their president. And that all brought me to the next step in my life. Right now, I am serving as the Vice Chair of the Planning and Development Commission. And I was on Governmental Affairs, and they said somebody should apply for that position, so I did. And I had experience with land use, and I was a good fit for that board. Serving on the Planning Commission, you may not know what that is, but it's your local zoning board. We operate almost identically to the Board of County Commissioners, except we only oversee growth in Citrus County. And right now, that's a very big topic, and it's a very critical time for our community. We can feel the pressures, and we can feel people coming in and moving to Florida in major numbers. And right now, we're on the front lines of those applications. We're the first stop for some and the last stop for others. We make final decisions on some of the applications that come before our board. On that board, I have learned how to balance property rights and the law, and I understand the economic impact of land use decisions. We know all of the alphabet soup, you know, the LDC, the IFR, you know, all of these different terms that are really important and critical to the development of our county. And I know everybody is going to stand up here today. I don't think any one of us would be here if we didn't have experience. But I'm really putting forward that I have relevant experience to the position that I'm applying for. Experience serving on Board of Directors, both nonprofit and governing, working with others and building consensus. I also have business experience and experience with planning and growth management, which is very vital at this time. So I hope to earn your vote on August 23rd. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Win.
Go ahead. Now? Okay. Thank you to the Pine Ridge Homeowners Association for holding its function. We all candidates appreciate it. And thank you for taking time out of your day and your schedule to be here to listen to us. We appreciate that. I am Win Webb, and I am a candidate for County Commission, District Four. That is the south part of the county, on the east side of the county, so in that area. But everyone will be able to vote for this race in the primary. There will be no general election for this race. Whoever wins the primary will be your county commissioner for the next four years. I am a lifelong resident of Citrus County. I grew up in Floro City. I still live in District Four, where I grew up. I raised my children in the same district. My grandchildren are currently attending school here in Citrus County as well. So I've been here a long time. I've got roots here. I want to see it prosper. I look at what's happening here, and we're having a great, what's happening nationally and what's happening locally. As a Navy veteran, I went in the Navy right out of high school. Vietnam was hot and heavy. I put in a little over four years, was honorably discharged, came back, and I ran my own business for about nine or 10 years. So I'm familiar with that segment of society as well. And then I had the opportunity to become a law enforcement officer. I became a law enforcement officer here in Citrus County, and I retired in 2006. And then in 2008, I ran for and was elected to the County Commission. During that time, I didn't just want to be a county commissioner, I wanted to be the best county commissioner I could be. So I took certification courses through the Florida Association of Counties. I received my certification the first year, and the second year, I went back for advanced courses, and I became an advanced certified county commissioner, which teaches you how to work with boards and get your message across without name-calling, without the animosity that you see going on today. I believe that we can have that same situation again, where we can discuss, maybe we don't agree. We can just agree to disagree sometimes. And so it's my belief that Citrus County will be growing. There's nothing we can do to stop it. All we can do is plan for it. And I think you need commissioners with the background to do the right planning and have the backbone to do the right thing. Thank you. Please vote for Win Webb, August 23rd.
Thank you.
Okay, go ahead. Go ahead.
Well, good evening. Thank you, guys, so much for being here tonight. My name is John Murphy, and I am a candidate for County Commission, District Four. And, you know, Citrus County is a great place. We live in the heart of the Nature Coast. If you think about our community, it affords us a style of life, a way of life, that you don't find a whole lot of other places in Citrus County. And we are in the precipice of really big changes in our community. So that is why I'm running, because I am looking at the future of our community, and I want to help build that future that we all want, and I want to do it together. So I am a leader, have been a leader in the local business community for more than 28 years. I also have been volunteering my time in my community the entire time I've lived here. So I've put the sweat equity in to help build the community that we all want. And that's the difference, I think, for me, is being involved in that community in a number of different ways. And for me, that looks like my involvement with the Chamber of Commerce. I've chaired the Chamber's Government Affairs Committee for almost 10 years now, and it's with a local group of business owners. And our mission is to advocate for local business, because that local business, those local businesses, they're your neighbors. They're the people we go to church with. They're the people that sponsor our Little League teams. And so helping to grow our local-owned business community is incredibly important to us. I've also spent my time with the youth of our community. I've, you know, as my kids were younger, helping out with youth sports all through high school. I'm an Eagle Scout and still a scout master to this day. My son's 24 years old, but I love having a positive influence on the youth of our community. So for that reason, that's why I'm still involved in scouting, because all too often, that involvement with the youth of our community, I've seen those youth that our school system helps to build the brightest and the brightest minds of our community. They go off to college, and then they find futures outside of Citrus County, because they don't see that that opportunity exists for them here. So bringing career-level jobs to our community is critically important to me. And that looks like the hospital, the rehab hospital that we just had a groundbreaking for, right next to the YMCA. Those are going to be high-skill, high-wage jobs right here in our community. But that also looks like the Construction Academy at Citrus High School, because those are career paths that young folks need to know they have an opportunity to attain. So I've had experience at those levels, and I also think that what I'm really passionate about is making sure that we have, local government has only certain roles in our life. And then after that, local government needs to move out of the way. Public safety is one of those roles. So making sure that fire, EMS, and sheriff's deputies are compensated fairly is critically important. So again, my name is John Murphy. I'm seeking for County Commission, District Four. This race will be decided in the primary, and I ask for your vote in August. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, whenever you're ready.
Hi, my name is Rebecca Baze, and I'm also a candidate for Commission, District Four. I got to Citrus County about 22 years ago, and I was recruited by Centress with their Trust and Financial Services Division. And about a week after I got here, I met my husband, Mike Baze, who's been the State Farm Agent out here on 491 for the last 37 years. So he's kind of another popular guy in this room. And from there, just, Citrus County instantly became home to me. And I got involved and served on many charitable boards here, the Big Brothers, Big Sisters, the American Cancer Society, a whole host of them. And in 2009, I started my own independent insurance agency, Insurance Resources and Risk Management, so I've probably insured a few of you along the way. And I had the pleasure of being recruited by another company to sell that business back in November this year, and it happens to be the seventh-largest insurance broker in the world that I sold that to. So that freed up my time to get back into County Commission, because you actually gave me the pleasure to serve you from 2010 to 2014. And on my time of the County Commission Board, I was on the TABARDA, which is the Tampa Bay Regional Area Transportation Authority. I served on the Metropolitan Planning Organization for Hernando and Citrus County, the transportation. I was appointed by Governor Scott on the I-75 Task Force Congestion Management. And I too care about what's going to happen to our community. I was also on the Board for the Wildlife Corridor, which is a statewide board that protects our wildlife. So I'm probably a little bit of that hybrid in here. I care both about our Nature Coast, and I care about how we're going to grow Citrus County. We can look to the south of us, and I don't think any of us want to look like the south. What I hear a lot of from you is that you moved from the south, and you want to preserve the quality of life that you came here for. And I think I have the skill set that we can move in that direction. We can protect our quality of life. And I also have the skill set in managing budgets, because I was tasked with the job of managing large financial budgets and people's wealth that they saved for years. So I'm asking for your vote again on August 23rd. I'd like the opportunity to represent you once again. It would be my honor. Thank you.
Okay, we'll be starting the question now with Diana Finnegan. And audience, please, please hold your applause. We only have so much time for this, and it takes up a little time for the next candidate. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm going to be asking the same question of all five of you, so if you need it repeated when it comes to your turn, holler. If not, we'll just go down the line with the same question. Current commission has recommended no build using any of the proposed turnpike extension corridors. Do you agree or disagree, and why?
I agree. And before they ever came out with that decision, I was already out in the community, seeing what the people wanted and researching myself. And early on, I said it didn't make any sense at all. One, going through that side of the county goes through all of our aquifers. Two, I went to the meeting where the Department of Transportation guy was talking and said that the goal was to bring that road over and the Sun Coast Parkway to meet together and dump into US-19, and that they were going to make improvements on US-19. That didn't make any sense to me either. Where are the rest stops, and how does that make sense for hurricane evacuation? So none of it really lined up with me. So I started speaking out against it long before, and I'm glad to see that our county commissioners have since followed suit.
Yes, thank you. I also agree with the decision by the Board of County Commissioners and do not support the turnpike extension coming through Citrus County, mainly because Citrus County didn't cause the problem, and we shouldn't be the cure. I think that other communities are asking to put the burden on our residents to solve their problems with congestion, and that is just not what we should do. I think we have other ways to improve connectivity. We have state roads that can be expanded and widened, and also, we now know with new information that there can be additional capacity at I-75. So I was also not for those four proposed routes.
Thank you for the question. I partially agree. I don't want it coming through Citrus County at all. We have 16,000 acres on that side of the county, the Old Boy Scout Reservation, and Flying Eagle, which is where the aquifer in the county comes the closest to the surface of the ground in Citrus County. But that needs to be protected, the river, lakes. And first of all, if they came through Citrus County, they'd actually be coming back west and south, not going north. There's supposed to be an evacuation route running north. Now, what Marion County wants to do, that's up to them. It's not for Win Webb or Citrus County to be telling them what they can or can't do or shouldn't do. I would leave that up to them. If they do not want it, I would support them wholeheartedly, because we don't want it either.
So I would not be supportive of the extension of the turnpike for several reasons I've already mentioned, but one of them also is, the idea is that to hook it into the extension of the Sun Coast Parkway. Well, that isn't even finalized, right? They have to have through now through 2026 of the Sun Coast Parkway kind of planned. It's going to end at red level, but after that, they don't have the final future planned. So how do you hook in a major thoroughfare for a road that you don't have the continuation of? So, no, I would not be in favor for the continuation of the northern extension.
I too agree with the decision not to bring the turnpike. There are seven districts of transportation in Florida. Citrus County is District Seven, we're the most northern. Marion County is District Five, and everything that you're talking about, this transportation congestion is coming out of District Five. We now know that FDOT has identified that there's additional space for two lanes on I-75, and they're also studying some flyovers like they've done in Orlando County to do those congestion relievers. And then Marion County is also looking at some interior arterial roads, collector roads to expand to relieve their congestion. So at this time, I don't see that that's even necessary, or shouldn't be a conversation for us.
Thank you. The next question, we'll start with Stacy.
Decades of insufficient funding and use of density as a rationing tool have left most of Pine Ridge roads in dire need of repair. How do you propose addressing our deteriorating roads? Where should the necessary funding come from? And how would you ration funding in the future to ensure Pine Ridge doesn't get left behind
This is a very big issue for Pine Ridge residents, and I understand. I think funding is, of course, a concern and an issue regarding residential road resurfacing, but I'm more focused on the formula and how it impacts you. Right now, we do have, as she mentioned, a density and roughness formula. And in Pine Ridge, you have 84% of your road segments that are on the list to be repaved. And because you have large parcels, one to five acres, and not as dense a community, you're being left out of the equation consistently. And so regarding the formula, what I've looked into is, we should add a build-out to the roughness and density. I'm still not convinced that worst to first isn't the best way to go, also with a build-out percentage. But what I'm thinking is, what I don't like is the fact that we're dividing the segments up by commissioner and allotting the same amount of segments per commissioner, rather than fixing the most necessary roads now and not letting the problem continue to go on and on and get bigger and bigger and bigger in certain areas, because you're satisfying a constituency. I would rather see us handle the roads that are up at first. And as far as in the future of funding, I think that we need to take a look at what we're actually spending on. I've been working with people who own asphalt companies, and we are right now putting a polymer in our mix for all of our resident, all of our roadways, and that may extend the life of the road, but it's really only required for major arterial roads. And we might be able to reduce the cost by, you know, maybe eliminating that from residential road resurfacing, so that our money could go further. But I think down the line with an infrastructure plan, we can, we'll have the money necessary to handle Pine Ridge Road.
Okay, everybody check their microphones. If you're not speaking, make sure they're off. I can hear a little feedback happening here. Thank you. Next would be Win.
Okay. That's a good question here. The problem is, the method that they're using to decide what roads get paved next has to do with the population on the road at that time, not just the criteria of the road. I think we need to review how it's being done, because as much as you think you're the only one in the same boat, Floro City thinks the same thing, and Citrus Springs thinks the same thing. Citrus Springs has an MSBU, they're paying for their roads, and they're still not getting their roads paved. So it's, everybody's in this same thing. The county's had a rough time keeping up with what needs to be done on a 20-year resurfacing plan. The new board is going to have to deal with this. They're going to have to address it. They're going to have to do some revamp, because quite honestly, it's not fair at this point how it's being done. And I think everybody here sees that. It's just going to be a matter of how do we fix it? And I think that it's going to take the right people with the right background to come up with some solutions. And the solution- And the solution that I'm seeing is that the paving companies are in this game too. I think that you're going to look at the price of paving. And with the price of fuel being what it is, diesel fuel and whatnot, paving is going up, which I understand their perspective, but I'm looking at your perspective first. You're on fixed incomes for the most part in this area. So I look out for you and I'm not for raising your taxes and I'm not for giving you an MSBU. I want to try to do this the way it's always been. We have new homes being built, new businesses coming in. We have new money coming in. We need to use it properly and we just need to have the right people in office. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
So as mentioned, the formula is part of the equation for Pine Ridge, right? You guys have larger home lots. So, you know, a half mile of road in Pine Ridge looks very different than the Inverness Highlands, Citrus Springs, whatever the case might be. So what if you layer on top of the formula, the percent to build out for that street? So if there's six homes on that street, but that's all that street's ever going to have because that's the way it's platted, well, that's at 100% build out. You guys, that road will never get done, right? Because it's six houses on it. So the formula, the actuary for it is definitely a consideration. And if you layer on top of it, the closeness to completion or build out of that road, that now creates a change in a balance that makes it more equitable for larger landowners or for larger areas that have larger properties like Citrus Springs. But the same is true for a cul-de-sac in Inverness, right? If there's four homes on that cul-de-sac, that cul-de-sac's never getting done because there's only four homes on it, right? So if you layer on top of it, this closeness to sell out of that road, then that really has a trickle-down effect. The other that is a much smaller opportunity for us though is we bid out our resurfacing as we should and state legislature mandate set, but there's actually a provision that allows the county to do some limited road resurfacing as well. So in my conversations with the county, there's actually an opportunity. There's might be smaller projects. So what that would do is get more roads done. And it's not saying that that's a Pine Ridge thing, but maybe there's some smaller roads or smaller projects that the county could actually resurface themselves in addition to what they have contracted out.
Thank you. Pine Ridge has about 140 miles of roads, and that's roughly about 3,500 homes. So 90 miles of your roads are what they consider to be seven to 10, which is the worst. And open grade is what you need right now. And open grade, because the deterioration and where they fallen into, that's about $315,000 a mile. Citrus County has 1,846 miles of roads to pave. And if we wanted to be on a 20-year cycle, we'd need $21 million a year. It's a problem. It's been a problem. It's something that needs to be addressed. It's got to be fixed. It's no different than your home. If your home needs a roof on it and you choose not to put one on it and it continues to leak, you have problems inside your house. So this equation is much like what we have to do when we're going to maintain a home. We need to maintain our roads. It's part of what's going to keep up your property values. It's what's going to help drive newer development into our community and add to our tax base. It has got to be addressed. And there's a couple of suggestions for it. We're talking about. It's been brought up, I think at the county, they're looking at two tenths of a mil on their millage rate. And that would bring in roughly two and a half million. You've got your gas tax, which is bringing in about nine million a year. And the B O C C has also allocated six million this last fiscal year to fund those roads. So if you're looking at 21 million, we're shy of that. And, but we need to start figuring out how we're going to get there.
Thank you. Diana?
Well, if Bill Hunter is listening, I know he couldn't be here today. He's really done a great job for you all, talking about the road situation in Pine Ridge. He met with every commissioner. I know he met with candidates, and I'm not sure if he had the opportunity to meet with everyone because I was out so early, but really laid out some nice spreadsheets about the roads here in Citrus County. No doubt it is an issue. And the current, if you didn't know, the current county commission has been talking about that two tenths of a mil to approve in this budget. And then the next one and the next one, they're looking at a step-up cycle. When you talk about how they're being paved, I agree, density's not working for Pine Ridge. You have a lot of nice property to take care of, and it's almost as if you're being punished for having these great properties as an acre or more. So my suggestion would be, instead of density, what about occupancy? Because Citrus Springs, they were all up in arms because before there was density, they were just worst to first paving these roads nobody lived on, nobody cared about them. And then the roads that people did care about weren't getting paved. So occupancy in Pine Ridge, so let's say you have five acres. Well, if you have a house and you're living there, all five acres should be accounted for as that part's 100% occupied. So if your whole street isn't full of houses on these half, you know, little half-acre lots, but you have five acres, one acre, whatever street you live on, if everybody's living on that street and it's occupied, that should be 100% occupied. And by the time it's over seven, yeah, they need to tackle the worst ones on down. But the big thing is paying for it. And I have been researching last year's budget, our current budget. I also, I almost got a little threat at the last meeting to be careful, but I'm going to go ahead and say it anyway to you all. Everything in that budget is not transparent. And I will make sure to work with county commissioners and county staff to make sure the budget's transparent and to get all the money we can to save for roads. Thank you.
Thank you, Diana. The next question, we'll start with Win Webb.
All right. What qualifications do you bring to seriously analyze budget requests?
I'm sorry, say that again about budget requests?
What qualifications do you bring to seriously analyze budget requests?
Okay. Well, first of all, I've had four years' experience as a county commissioner. We, when I was a county commissioner before, we had the opportunity to reduce the budget. We reduced the budget over a four-year period of over $47 million without losing any service. That's the experience I bring. And as an advanced certified county commissioner, that's one thing you spend a lot of time looking at is budgets. And they teach you how to analyze the budgets, what belongs where and where you can, and I don't like to use the word cut, but reduce. A lot of times, we can reduce budgets or certain aspects of the budget without affecting the overall performance within the county. And that's the performance that I look for and I bring to the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Next will be John Murphy.
Thank you so much. So my professional background is I do work for the Citrus County Chronicle. I work on the advertising and marketing side of the business, and I've been there for 28 years now. And so because I work on the operational side of the business, I actually help run. We have not just the Chronicle, but we own newspapers through the entire state. So actually, I'm part of the team that runs all of those newspapers with bottom-line responsibility and have had that for the last 28 years. So I have a multimillion-dollar budget experience that I deal with. And so I certainly understand what that looks like, how to read budgets, how to make sure that we're getting the most out of our budget. That's on the private, on the public sector, on the, sorry, the private sector. In addition to that, I've served as the chairman of the Citrus County Chamber of Commerce, which is run by a board of 21 people that I've been the chair of with a significant budget as well. So we're, not only have I have experience in the private sector with budgeting, but also with having fiduciary responsibility to those budgets of, in this case, a member-run organization, right? And if you don't take care of that budget, you don't have members of your organization. So I've been very instrumental in both of those areas.
Thank you. Next will be Rebecca Bayes.
I too served as the commissioner from 2010 to 2014 during the Great Recession, coupled by the closure of Duke, which significantly reduced our budget overnight. And we had to identify assets and figure our way out of that, which I thought we did a pretty good job. Serving on the county commission, I would tell you, the budget is quite complex. You have your ad valorem taxes, you have your intergovernmental funds, you have enterprise funds. There are funds in that that are restricted. For instance, we said an administrative priority when I was on the board that we would hold reserves somewhere between eight and 17%. We roughly, I think about $14 million is what we have in reserves. You're required to have two months' worth of operating expenses. You also have to acquire money for your long-term debt. And your enterprise funds are fees and things that are paid, and they run independent of any other budget, your ad valorem taxes. It is complex, and I can tell you, I've dug through this budget. And I'm quite concerned because our budget is just shy of $400 million. And I've tried to identify what our reserves are, and I finally think I have found them. And what it shows is we have $93 million in reserves.
Thank you. Make sure that microphone is on. Next will be Diana Finnegan.
Well, the question was, what experience do I bring to the table to understand these budget requests and make decisions? When I started in the private or the nonprofit sector at CASA, we had a very small budget. And by the time I left, I tripled that budget in addition to all the additional monies that I brought in. But I had to learn how do we expand and how do we provide for our community on a very limited budget? So I had to find ways to bring money in, and I had to make those really tough decisions. It's also very important when you have a staff. I started with a, I doubled the staff before I left too. So I started with a very small staff and then had a larger one. And then, of course, in our private businesses, we employ at least 30 people generally at a time. And you always have to take other people into consideration because their lives and their families and their livelihoods depend on you. So we know how to make those decisions. Especially in my first business in CASA, when you don't have the money, you have to know how to partner with people, not only make the decisions of what's important, but how can we get there? And if I can't accomplish getting there, who else can I bring to the table so it's mutually beneficial? So I have a lot of experience in that. In our private businesses now, I do have to say, we started out and we planned our growth efficiently. So the only time we've ever had debt in that is for mortgage when we expanded our building. And then I negotiated some great interest because we had, we bought from some private people. So, and now, you know, when this wonderful man tells me I need two new vans or I need to expand this property, we put our heads together and he leans a lot on me to make those decisions and negotiate that. So I have a lot of budget experience on both ends. I know how to do, manage a lot of things with a little bit of money, and I know how to make that money grow. Thank you.
Thank you. Last for this question, Stacy Worthington.
Is it just my mic, maybe? Anyway, I don't know. I hear the feedback too. When my husband and I, is it too much? Okay. When my husband and I decided to go into entrepreneurship, I got a degree in accounting. I wanted to be able to manage our books and handle the company's finances. And I felt that it was an important step. So I have a degree in accounting, and I think that is something that will go a long way into being able to handle budget requests. And at the same time, serving on a number of board of directors, specifically on the nonprofit at the Boys and Girls Clubs of Citrus County, I was the treasurer of that board for many years and handling our financial interests. And then also, I was the mentor treasurer. When you have a degree in accounting, everybody wants to make you treasurer. And so I was the mentoring treasurer at the Citrus County Building Alliance also. So I have advanced study in accounting, budgets, and planning. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question, we'll start with John Murphy. And again, turn your mics off when you're not speaking.
For years, Citrus County has held property taxes low, but infrastructure has been underfunded. The budget is online for you to analyze. Have you found any cuts that can be made, and do you see a need to raise taxes in the future?
Thank you so much. So yes, historically, we have had many years where we have enjoyed a rollback rate in the millage rate. So where we've said, you know what, the actual millage rate, we're going to reduce that so you pay a similar amount of taxes because of evaluation and so on and so forth. I think that's part of what has gotten us to the position we're at, right? We've underfunded so many aspects of infrastructure, road resurfacing, not the least of which. And so now we're at a point where they do want to put two tenths of a mil into road resurfacing. They want to put, what, one tenth of a mil into mental health and a couple other areas as well. So the problem is, now we're also coming into a period where we have, you know, historic inflation, right? So we've ignored this problem for such a significant period of time. And now we're coming into, we're finally taking it seriously to deal with the things that we've not effectively dealt with for a long period of time. And so that's the part that concerns me. I do like the idea that they're willing to stair-step in some of the resolutions that they want to be able to effectively fund what we have not been able to fund in the past. Also, they, at the same time, they're floating around this idea of a sales tax initiative. And the only way that happens is if it comes from you, the citizen. That should never come from the DAIS, right? That should never come from the board to the citizens. If the citizens want to have that and they want to work toward that end, that's a conversation to have, and certainly that's something I'd be willing to put on the ballot. But that's not, the conversation shouldn't start with the five county commissioners.
Thank you, Rebecca. Bayes, next.
Out of $400 million budget, I don't know anybody that just does a one-year budget. No corporation, nobody. It's foolish. We should be forecasting five years out. We should be looking at everything from revenues to expenditures and looking at the economy and where it's going and our growth patterns. We can't get there unless we know how we're going to finance it. I would tell you that as we're talking about transportation, FDOT works on a five-year work program. That's for state highways. The only one we're looking at right now is 491. You've got 900 homes coming in on Rock Crusher. You've got others coming in in Crystal Oaks. You've got the interchange managements coming at Cardinal and 44 and eventually 486. And you've got growth on 491. It's taken 20 years to build three miles. You'll eventually have another development down the road. What the state's going to tell you before they give you a dollar, you've got to have a 20% match. These are all things that we've got, we've got to plan for them. They just, we can't go from budget to budget, meeting to meeting because it just leaves our community in habit stance. It's not acceptable. And we should be really forecasting what those revenues and expenditures and our growth is going to cost us.
Thank you. Next is Diana Finnegan.
I just want to make sure because I've listened to everyone. It's if we found anywhere to cut the budget and if I'm for raising taxes, right? Okay. So I have looked at the budget. And if you had, if you had to make cuts, we have so many department heads, so you would just have to probably baseline that as a percentage. Like, we need money in other areas. We're shooting for you to cut this percent. What can you come up with? I mean, we have department heads for a reason, so they should be able to have some management of their own budgets. The other thing, and I don't want to stay with certainty because Randy Oliver speaks really fast, but I thought in the budget hearing, he said that our reserves for this next budget to deal would be at 16%. Last year was 14.5%. Now, I'm a huge reserve person. By the time I left CASA, I had a year's worth of reserves just for future planning, which is almost unheard of, and I worked really hard to get there. So I'm a huge reserve person. But did y'all check the GDP this morning? It's down again, two months in a row. You know what that means, right? Yeah, but normally people look at that like, oh, we're in a recession. Two months usually signifies that. They're not making that, they're not saying that yet from the White House, but we all know that's what that means. So I'm not quite sure why, you know, there's times where you pile up and there's times when you know that your citizens are hurting. And a lot of people are on fixed incomes. A lot of people have retired to Pine Ridge, and they're looking at the money that they have saved. And maybe you're living on interest and you realize your money is not doing so well. So I don't think now is... So I don't think now is the time to raise taxes. We're going to look at that budget, dig into it. And if we do have to make some reductions, not cuts, then we'll have to make those tough choices. But now to, GDP tells me no, no new taxes.
Thank you. Stacy Worthington.
When I look at the budget, as far as areas to cut, the only thing that was blaring to me was I saw some capital improvement projects for, you'll love this, repaving of like the Lucanto government building parking lot year after year. Now, it was postponed in '22 and '21, but that was one thing that kind of stuck out to me. Like, why would we repave the same parking lot year after year? But as far as taxes are concerned, just picking up on what Ms. Finnegan was talking about, yes, there's so much pressure right now. We have national pressure with inflation and the cost of living for everybody. Everybody's feeling the pinch, both private and businesses. And then we have also concerning our budget, we have unfunded state mandates. Right now, we have an increase in wages coming that was voted on by the people. And then also Medicaid costs that are another pressure on our budget. And then we have an increased demand for services in Citrus County. People want more for EMS and mental health. So we have all of these things. I want to keep taxes low. But I think that what we need to do is have a better plan forward. If we update our comprehensive plan, I think we should weave fiscal responsibility through that plan and so that we are consistently staying on target and, and being able to keep taxes low. Planning keeps taxes low. Effective planning, both with our economy and our growth management, that will help to keep our taxes low.
Thank you. Win Webb is next.
This, okay. I forget whether I turn it up or down. It's a, the plan is, long-term plan is excellent idea. However, long-term plans get changed. We have a comprehensive plan here in the county that gets changed every year a little bit. So even though you make these plans, they're not cut and stone. And quite honestly, with inflation being at a 40-year high right now, I don't see things getting easier. I see things getting harder. As far as raising your taxes, I'm not a proponent of raising taxes. I believe that if you look at all the growth that's coming into the county, whether it's residential or whether it's business-related, commercial, all of this is bringing in new money. We have to be aware of it and start utilizing and understand this. A lot of that money is on streets that have been underpopulated and not been paved. So now with that population coming up, they may start to get some of the money flowing there. But again, it's going to come back to, we need to change the way it's been judging in the past. And I think you'll see a difference as it comes through the new year. But again, it's going to be, the cost of everything is so high. Gasoline is so high, diesel is high. And we're, it's going to be a struggle for the new board, regardless of who's on the new board. And you are aware of it, I'm sure, because you have to buy gas too.
Thank you. The next question will start with Rebecca Bays.
The property appraiser certified a 9% increase in property values. If millage is held the same, doesn't this equate to a 9% increase in revenues? Where should these revenues be allocated and would you raise lower or hold the military?
The, this, this year, our ad valorem taxes were about 88 million in the new year. I think they're going to be about 94 million. You elect county commissioners to tell us what you want. I'm hearing, everybody says they want public safety. They want their share. They want EMS. You want your roads paved. So when you tell us that, we have to find the money for it. 70% of all of our ad valorem taxes is to fund constitutional officers and unfunded mandates. We collect gas taxes. We have the enterprise funds. And all those funds and the various categories have to be used for specific reasons. What we have left over out of the ad valorem for discretionary funding is that 30% that we have to make up the difference. So we have to lean on our constituents. You need to tell us what you want. And then we have to find the way to balance the wants and the needs with the monies that we collect.
Thank you. Next is Diana Finnegan.
You know, what's interesting about your question, because as soon as I saw those numbers myself, I was saying, okay, I'm going to do the math, 9%. That's going to be roughly $35 million. So all the things that you all say that you want, I think, I think we can get there. But the interesting thing is, when I sat in that budget hearing, the budget was based on an increase of one and a half percent. So the millage that you were paying, or you are paying this year, is like 7.7 more numbers. And so they rolled that back. And then when adding that two tenths of a mil for roads and for mental health, and then I think it was like 1.7, now they're saying for the sheriff's office, when all that came up, you're going to be about 8.2 if that is approved. So it is a slight increase. It's not a full mil and that was palatable to everybody. But still in my head, I'm like, wait a minute, this is based on one and a half percent when we know that we're going to have more money. So I'm not quite sure where the math is going like that. One, only one commissioner said that, said, we have more money than this coming in. You all need to go back and get better numbers. Now, I know they'll have some more budget hearings until the final budget's approved, but I certainly would like to see more accurate numbers myself.
Thank you. Next is Stacy Worthington.
I'm sorry, what was the question?
The property appraiser certified a 9% increase in property values. If millage is held the same, does that not equate to a 9% increase in revenues? Where would these revenues be allocated and would you raise lower or hold the military?
Yes, of course. Yes, the property appraiser did report that and of course, it means an increase in revenues. But what we're looking at here is they have a lot of issues on the table. We have the road resurfacing, residential road resurfacing that we've been so behind on. And that we have the EMS, which when we took it over, they said it was going to cost more. So there was an additional cost there. And then the sheriff presented his budget and there was a great increase. And I support the, the sheriff's budget request for increased salaries for the deputies and our police officers that are out there doing the work. Especially because we don't want to have a continuous, you know, lack of retention of these deputies where they go to work for other counties because they're getting paid higher salaries. But regarding whether or not it would be for raising the millage rate, I think what we've seen right now is the opening salvo. You know, the conversation is just beginning. And this was the first budget workshop of three. And so we'll continue to see negotiations take place. And I think they'll come to a place where they can balance and keep our millage rate where it is. It can, right now, they have put out what their maybe wants are, but what are our needs? And when we really have further discussions, we'll be able to get down to what are the needs of the community? And I think we'll be able to keep the millage rate low.
Thank you. Next is Win Webb.
Thank you. I look at it as, as the money that's coming in is 9%. I don't think you need to raise the millage rate. You're going to get 9% already. I look at it from being able to put the money that's coming in where it needs to go. We, and that is, you've already told me. Everything you've told me has been basically infrastructure or public safety. So that's really makes the job easier to come up with when you're sitting up there as a county commissioner. I look at it as, as the, whether it's your roads, whether it's stormwater, whether it's your water systems or your sewer systems, or whatever it is, those are the areas that we need to look at to keep you safe and secure in your neighborhood. Because we're, our number one job is the safety and well-being of the citizens of Citrus County. That's what our job is, not setting policy as everybody said. When we set policy, it's supposed to be for your safety and well-being. And the same goes for this budget. If we have the money to do it with, we need to use it, utilize it without dumping on your back worse. Because the property appraisers already increased the amount. The way I look at it is, is we can, we can, we can do good with what they've already given us and we don't need to be greedy and try to take more from you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is John Murphy.
So the evaluation, and yes, you're going to have increases, but, but we all enjoy the protection of the 3%, you know, you know, maximum increase in our, our property taxes, right? So, so that's one component. So you're not going to see this across the board, 9% increase for us. And on the other side, on the commercial side, they actually enjoy actually a maximum increase as well. Commercial can actually, valuation can increase up to 10% in any one year. So there's disproportionate amount of, of valuation increase that could happen to commercial. So, so I don't see it as a, as a straight line translation to, to a 9% increase for, for us. But, but yes, part of how you're getting there though, is new construction, new money, right? You have, because those are going to be evaluated at a 100% rate. So you don't have that, that savings of that save our homes or now additional 25,000 savings that is also being layered on top of that. So, so, so I don't see it as a straight across the board 9% increase. But to, to what has been mentioned earlier, I do think that we need to make sure that we are making those investments in our community because public safety is critically important. The citizens say that. We've said that time and time again and we need to fund that. It, it just comes on the heels of a lot of years of, of, as I said before, enjoying a rollback rate when we could have maybe afforded, didn't have a 40-year-high inflation. But now we're layering on top of, of finally a desire to actually have impact, this other contributing factors. And, and the county has growing expenses, just like my business has growing expenses. What my fuel costs are for my business are exponentially higher today than they were 365 days ago. And running the county is very much the same way. Healthcare costs are the same thing. So, so in addition, there are contributing factors to the increased costs that you're going to see with local government.
Thank you. The next question will start with Diane Finnegan.
What is your response to the BOCC overriding the Planning and Development Commission's vote on the Meadowcrest development?
Well, that was nothing short of awful. I sat during that whole meeting with Meadowcrest. And let me tell you, the, the commission chambers were overflowed with people. I stood in the back of the room. There wasn't a chair left. And then the jury, the overflow room was completely filled with people. All these people were reaching out to their commissioners and they still voted against them. So, no, I, I don't agree with that. I think that we have zoning for a reason. And the other problem I have with it, you know, people try to come out and say, oh, she's not for affordable housing. I'm the one up here that housed people like my whole career. I literally trans, trans, translated people from temporary to permanent housing most of my life. So I, I know what that looks like. The problem is, I don't like it when there's even false information coming from the county commission. One commissioner said, my son earns a really good money and he can't afford to live here. Well, guess what? Your son will not be able to live in that development either because he'll make too much money. Another commissioner said, well, wouldn't that be nice? You'll have, you'll have nurses and teachers living in your neighborhood. No, nope. They, they make too much money too. So I think there's some confusion in the wording. Certain commissioners want you to say workforce housing or attainable housing. Don't use affordable housing or low-income housing. But all that does is confuse the voter. And those of us that's worked with housing know that HUD has certain words that you use and certain income standards. And for that community, it was low-income housing. Now, it's beautiful and the ones that they have in Evans and Fordridge are beautiful, but they weren't in planned communities. They were zoned correctly for that and it's working. So if we have housing like this, it just needs to be where it works, not in, in these local communities.
Thank you. Next is Stacy Worthington.
Yeah, this is a very interesting question. As I served on the Planning and Development Commission, who did not recommend the Meadowcrest affordable housing. I know the county commission went another way. And what I would say is that when we heard the application, what we were looking at is an, an existing DRI or development. And they had, they, they were coming in and they wanted to put something new that was not compatible with what was existing there. And so from a commissioner's standpoint, sitting on that board, hearing input from the residents, I found that it was a conflict between the land uses and was generally not compatible and voted against the affordable housing in Meadowcrest. That being said, I think that, you know, in our community, I do call it workforce housing because I do see a direct line. Maybe not nurses, but there are tradespeople, people who work at restaurants, people who work in medical offices who may earn a lower salary. I think we have a place for this type of development while it wasn't right in Meadowcrest. But if we update our comprehensive plan and expand our planned service area and work on zoning and finding the right places for this type of development, or perhaps when we have a planned unit development, something new coming into Citrus County, we could have them set aside 25% for workforce housing before, as a condition of approval for their application for a new subdivision. So I think that the county commission made a different call than we did. But all in all, we have a place and a plan to, to move forward with getting opportunities for people.
Thanks. Next is Win Webb.
Thank you. Let me say right up front that I support workforce housing. However, I don't think that this should have been where it was. I was surprised that the board went against the planning and zoning board, who voted unanimously not to approve it. And yet they overrode them on a three to two vote. I'm not going to go into why I think they voted three to two. It's just something in my own mind. You have to figure that out for yourself. But, but I for one, think you need to do what the people want you to do. You're supposed to represent the people, not big corporations. That's just my personal belief. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is John Murphy.
Very good. So I do think it was, it was, you know, the, the planning board is a recommending board. They, but they, they entrenched themselves in these processes and these land use changes or, or these requests. And so the fact that they came with a unanimous voice and said that we were not advocating for this, it was surprising that the BOCC kind of was counter to that. I will say that at the end of the day, the, the land use of could be a lot of things, right? It could be a car wash. It could be whatever. But the residents were, were not pleased with what was being proposed and it was not compatible with what was the designation of the land. And that ultimately is what should be guiding this process. I think if the residents were amicable and they were trying to jockey for position to get better things out of it for their community, that's certainly a conversation they could have had. But that wasn't what they did. They very clearly said, we don't want it, right? They didn't, they weren't advocating for the developer to pay for the private road or for pay for the park or anything like that. They were clearly saying, we don't want it. The planning commission said, it's not compatible with the local community. So the fact that the board of county commissioners did not vote the same way is surprising to me, yes. I would, I would not have been in that same position.
Thank you. Next is Rebecca Bays.
Repeat, 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 repeat. I wouldn't have voted for it either. I do agree with what Stacy mentioned. I believe that as we have these new developments that come before the PDC or before the county, that we need to ask them to set aside for, for affordable housing. I think that's the appropriate time to do that. Not force it somewhere where you've already made an investment and you have an understanding of a quality of lifestyle that you like and enjoy and then have something imposed on you. I would go one step further to say, when we talk about I would go one step further to say, when we talk about workforce housing, I would like to see it on a sliding scale of income because I don't think it benefits any community to have just all low income. I'd like to see a mixture so that you do have law enforcement, you do have school teachers and you do have somebody that's more of a lower income, you know, maybe a waitress or someone that's working a job that doesn't have that, because I think when you do that, that rises all tides and it prevents that development from maybe becoming, you know, the projects in the future. So I think when you have that, you insulate yourself from having those type projects go south on you.
Thank you. Next question, we'll start with Diana Worthington. No, Stacy Worthington.
Zoning in the county is being changed to accommodate developer plans for growth and higher density. Should master plans community like Pine Ridge have its community character changed by, because large property owners want to change the land use? For instance, our golf course has been now sold.
There are, at times when we have applications come before us, typically there might be a change of a buy right amount or what could be developed by right. There might be a change. Typically it's only if they have a planned unit development. So that's when, yes, they might come in and they'll have a site plan and they will lay out what their plan is for that community. This is not about your golf course, but this is just generally. So when we see those site plans, when I take a look at those site plans, I'm looking for, does this plan fit with the nature coast and our small town charm? Is this a benefit to the community? What is the cost benefit analysis? Will this development be an asset and something that will fit in Citrus County? And a lot of times they are. And so when you say they, they're asking for or changing zoning or things like that, they might ask for additional density, but it's not necessarily high density. Like typically we had a case or an application that came before us and the developer, you know, through a planned unit development could have asked for eight units per acre and he only, he only asked the board for four. So that project to me made sense. It wasn't, they, they could have gone for more, but they weren't. They were keeping in, in touch with what Citrus County is, which is a more rural, low dense community. But regarding your golf course, a lot of people have asked me about this this evening and I haven't seen that application yet. I will sit on the board that hears that application. So I do have quasi judicial authority. And so I want to make sure that I don't have any specific ex parte, you know, discussions about an application that I will see. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Win Webb.
Thank you. I would be opposed to that simply because it would be upzoning in the middle of a, an established residential area where most of the lots here, I think, if I'm not mistaken, are either one acre or larger. And you're trying to get the population much higher than that per acreage. That's not, it doesn't meet the criteria that I would see for affordable housing, which would be, it needs to be near hospitals, it needs to be near shopping, a Publix or something, you know, where they can go shopping, public transportation. All of these things need to be close to this and a golf course, quite honestly, doesn't fit any of that criteria as far as I'm concerned. I would not support that and I'm not a proponent of upzoning anyway.
Thank you. Next is John Murphy.
So there is time and space where, where land use changes are absolutely appropriate, right? But it, it also has to be conforming with the surrounding neighborhood or whatever the case might be. So that's why the PUD exists, right? The planned unit development because that helps to, to kind of create that. So, so land use changes, part of the reason I think that they coming down so fast and furious for us as a community is our comprehensive plan, we're tweaking it around the edges all the time, right? And I think that's part of inherently the problem with it is we do need to dial back and make sure that, and, and take a real look at our comprehensive plan that has been on a shelf since 1980s, whatever. And kind of been tweaked here and there every year since 1980, whatever. And so we need to make the time, energy and monetary investment, not this coming year, because there's too many other challenges for us. But to actually readdress our, our comprehensive plan. So, but I will tell you, my guiding philosophy is going to be making sure that whatever land use changes come before us, it is making sure that is still in with concurrent with the, the area that it surrounds, right? So if it is a, a change in, in commercial usage or whatever the case might be, is it really meeting our community's needs? Is it still meeting whether it be that part of our community or the whole community? And if it's not, knows the answer. Property rights are really important, but when you're starting to ask and you, and if I, if you, if it's developable for X, then you should develop it for X. But when you start making requests to change the land usage, then that's our opportunity sometimes to say yes, and in a lot of cases, but very much no is an appropriate answer as well, when it's not conforming with the surrounding areas.
Thank you. Next is Rebecca Bayes.
Today we're about 78,000 households and the way we're currently plotted, we would be just shy of 200,000. And if we do P U Ds, we're just shy of 300,000. So when I think about what the development is going to be in the future, I want to make sure that we don't look like a bunch of rooftops. And again, it goes back to property rights and being able to have conforming to what the communities want. And I would look, when you're talking about your golf course, it's not, I don't think that's what you signed up for. I think it was designed for a particular use. I don't think it conforms with what you want. I wouldn't be in favor of that. If you rather turn it into a green space or you want to go together as a group and purchase it and do something different with it. Those are things that I think you need to consider as an H O A. You came in here and you bought like an equestrian center or a large parcels. And I think that's what, how you would like to see your community remain. And I would be supportive of that.
Thank you. Next is Diana Finnegan.
I'm, I'm not going to sidestep this question at all. Someone tries to put affordable housing on your golf course, I will stand with you and will be completely opposed to that. That is not what Pine Ridge is supposed to look like. That's not what you all bought your property for. You did your homework. You knew how it was zoned. This is where you put your retirement dollars. This is where you live and there's no place for that. I am curious, not accusing, just curious why a developer would buy a golf course and have that plan when they know it's not zoned for that. So maybe that's something we need to look at a little deeper too. But with me sitting on that commission, you, you don't have to worry about that in the future. We'll just have to worry about, you know, making sure that other, the other four people are on board also with Pine Ridge.
Thank you. The next question will start with Win Webb.
Does growth need to be controlled? And if so, how can the county effectively manage growth while maintaining our rural feel and preserving the beauty of our area?
Great question. Basically what we use is the comprehensive plan and the reason it was designed was because we were seeing urban sprawl already taking place in Citrus County. And so the, the comprehensive plan brought that, let's, let's fix it. The, the problem is that we didn't have a maximum build out. We still don't have a maximum build out for the county. So that's going to be an issue. But basically what it does is comprehensive plan pushes growth into the middle of the county, away from our springs and, and Gulf Coast and away from the rivers and lakes to try to get the growth here into the middle where it's higher ground, has less effect on the aquifer. That is what the plan is and that's what we're as commissioners are charged with protecting. Because this is the nature coast. As I say, I'm a lifelong resident. I, I've lived here in the county longer than any of these people. I know what it used to look like. It's never going to come back. But I like to look at it as a tree. If you look at a tree out there, it's, it's doing one of two things. It's either growing or it's dying. I want to see Citrus County grow, but not at the pace that it's growing right now. Not a lot we can do about it, but I think inflation is going to take care of some of that. Because I think you're going to start seeing some of the growth slowing down. And then we'll be able to deal with it hopefully a lot better and hopefully after the next election.
Thank you. Next is John Murphy.
So you're right. You know, you hear often, well, growth is, is going to be coming to Citrus County. Growth has been steadily coming to Citrus County since like 1980, right? It, it just, it's, it, it's peaked and valued certainly over, over time, but consistently we've been growing as a community. And, you know, there are 60,000 vacant home lots, buildable, single family home sites today, that could be built on today, right? No zoning change needed necessary. 60,000, 50% of those are in Citrus Springs. So, so how you control it is, is with future land use and when you have developers that want to develop properties, that is when you have the opportunity to control those densities, control what that looks like. And along the way too, though, we need to make sure that, you know, that's just the residential side, the commercial side we can control as well. I was talking with some folks earlier about 486 and 491. And, you know, all that's going to kind of explode in that intersection. Well, I think a key to important part of that is making sure that there's interconnectivity between all of those, those, in this case, those shopping centers, talking about where Target's going to go and, and where the Y M C A is and where this new rehabilitation hospital is, is making sure that, that we're planning it in a way that there's interconnectivity within those commercial areas even, is how you make sure that you mitigate some of the impact that that growth is going to, there's going to be new homes that's, that are come up here in Citrus County. But you can, we can mitigate the impact that those homes might have on either collective roads or even roads within residential roads.
Thank you. Next is Rebecca Bayes.
Again, like I said, we're 78,000 households. I have the list. Here's what we're planning for. Everything from single family, multifamily, mobile homes, low density, high density, coastal. It's coming. The other mitigating factor that we have right now is that people that have small hobby farms, they're losing their exemptions because you have to be a certified business. And there are people that are out there looking for these properties. They're buying them up and they're changing the zoning or they're looking to develop those properties out. So I think it's probably not a popular thing to say, but impact fees are not a bad thing. We're about middle of the road of all of our surrounding counties. Those impact fees help to offset some of those costs. And it also maybe stops a little bit of people from wanting to come in here, whether, you know, Marion County happens to be very low to the south of us happens to be high. I'm not opposed to them because I think we need to have, new growth needs to pay for itself. So I think we're fair and equitable. And I think that's how we control some of this growth that's coming.
Thank you. Next is Diana Finnegan.
When we talk about managing growth, I think Rebecca had mentioned impact fees and that, that is one way when you want growth to slow or things that you don't want, you make those higher. When there's certain things that you do want, you, you waive that when we talk about economic development. The other thing is we need to have key deciding and planning and not the developers so that we, we don't end up with sprawl. That you don't end up with low income housing on your golf course. And, and the county has to stick to the zoning and plans within reason. When we talk about economic development, we should be looking at infrastructure because a lot of places, businesses or good paying jobs that would want to come here, want infrastructure. So water, sewer and maybe some broadband internet, some things that they're looking for. So if the county plans ahead for that, we can direct that growth and manage it. And then again, sticking to our comprehensive plan and not upzoning neighborhoods where people have already settled in.
Thank you. Next is Stacy Worthington.
Growth should absolutely be managed. When we see people coming in, if we don't plan effectively, it could negatively impact our quality of life. Right now, they talked about, they did a strategic plan for the Board of County Commissioners and they said the number one threat to Citrus County was growth, but then also our lack of preparedness for it. I think that a lot of times we haven't had a plan. It's been sort of laissez faire, you know, development here, there and everywhere. I think we need to rethink the conventional methods for planning and development. And perhaps develop economic nodes where we have our guide, our, our economy and our, our building of our economic development into certain areas like around our cities or at that 486 and 44 intersection where we already know that we're going to have a, a shopping plaza, another shopping plaza, and then you have Walmart and then you have Wawa across the street. So that to me, also it's in the infill and that's where we already have services like utilities and public safety and infrastructure in place. So we want to guide some of that economic development towards those areas where there'll be less impact on Citrus County.
Thank you. Our next question, we'll start with John Murphy.
What role should the county play in stimulating high tech jobs, a living wage and clean energy?
That's a great question. That is, I talk to folks all the time about career jobs and because I do think government has certain roles in our life. They're limited roles. And in some cases, government needs to move out of the way. And, or government needs to be an asset and an assistance to folks. I'll give you a great example, personal example. I'm working with a team of folks that are working with Wright Rutter Aviation. They're in Emirunis. They're the folks that run the Emirunis Airport. These are great folks. They've been there a handful of years. It's a husband and wife team. When they started like five, six years ago, there was a single employee and themselves. They have almost 30 employees now and they've done that by themselves. Government didn't intercede to do that. However, government had an opportunity to help them. They wanted to make an application for a grant because they want to put a hanger on their property to augment their ability and what they have for their community. So county came in and said, you know what? We have grant writers at the county. We'll help you with that. And they, they said, okay, cool. Awesome. And then when our economic development director vaporized, as many of our leadership team has, he was leaving and realized the county not only hadn't followed through with the actual grant application, they didn't tell anybody they were not following through with the grant application. So, so to answer what is government's role? If we're going to have an economic development director and we should, and we're going to work with partner businesses to help them for something as simple as a grant application, actually giving them communication is the bare minimum of what we should be doing. So I think government's role is alongside the private sector, but not in replacement of the private sector.
Thank you. Next is Rebecca Bayes.
Many of you might have seen sidebacks down on 19, right behind Arby's. And when I was on the board in 2010, we had a program that we worked with workforce. And we had a, a program that we actually would help hire people. That company has about 200 employees. And when I was on the board before, we were very instrumental in helping them and they keep growing that business. And that is a high tech business. They develop medical boards, batteries for the machines that run around out there on the tarmac that carries your luggage. It's now like, it's a quick 45 minute plug in to get it recharged up. It's really kind of a cool story and we have it right here in the county. But the biggest thing that we face in this county, until we had the Suncoast Parkway, we had no transportation connectivity. Every business that's looking to come, transportation, it's a cost of doing business. That's why FedEx and UPS, they all plan right hand turns. It's less time, it's less preventive for accidents. So the transportation node is number, that is number one. Number two, it's bringing people in here. We, you have to have the workforce. We're getting there, but our average age is 59. So we have to, we have to get this transportation figured out. We have to get the new people in here. When you drive down the Suncoast Parkway, that new interchange at 54, 56 down there in that zone, that's Moffick's new 700 acre park. And the first development of that is going to be research and development. Those are six figure plus jobs. We're never going to have home runs. We're going to have single hits. That's who we are as a community. And I think that's kind of who we want to be.
Thanks. Next is Diana Finnegan.
What role should the county play in stimulating high tech jobs, a living wage? What role should the county play in stimulating high-tech jobs, a living wage, and clean energy?
I was just trying to think about the clean energy part because nobody touched on that. That's why I wanted you to repeat the question. You know, the county's role, first of all, like it has been said, we need that economic development director. And and I had touched on it before, making Citrus County look appealing to them with infrastructure, with water, sewer, broadband internet. You know, everyone talks about bringing new big business in here, which hey, if they're paying some really great jobs, that would, that would be good. But I would also like us to build into our young people and to our current businesses now. You know, we started, Steve started with A-Troc. Some of you remember that, Steve Dixon, you remember that. And then got into a rented space, and then we started acquiring property for our business. And as we were growing employees, we were training them. And as they were trained, our current employees, they make good money. You know, they they can feed their families and buy houses and buy nice new vehicles, and they're making it here. So I would like a little more entrepreneurship with the people that actually live in Citrus County and to make small business here pay good living wages also.
Thank you. Next is Stacy Worthington.
Government, as far as stimulating jobs, you know, everyone asks about that, how are we going to increase jobs? And really, it's not the main role for government. What we can do is make sure that our economy is strong and diversify our economy. Yes, supporting and and having infrastructure in place. And, you know, I was talking with Fiber, a person who works for Fiber, and talking about our our troubles with wide broadband internet. And he said, the best thing the county can do is just when companies come in and they want to provide this service, don't be jerks. And I was like, oh, okay, well, that's easy, you know? I mean, they want us to kind of stay out of the way and and allow infrastructure to develop and come into Citrus County. And when I talk about diversifying our economy, you know, right now, we have one taxpayer, Duke Energy, that is one very large taxpayer. And the, a lot of the rest of the burden falls on residential homeowners. And so we do need to work to get business, some business in Citrus County and support the local small mom and pops that we have. And I think that will bring jobs when we follow through on some of the things that have been outstanding. Like, for example, you have industrial parks that we have started and not completed. So once we're able to walk through some of these projects and work with WTC to get some more training and hands-on experience for people who live here, so maybe they don't have to leave and go out of county, we'll we'll have job growth or creation.
Thank you. Next is Win Webb.
The way I see it, the best way for government to help is, for the most part, get out of the way. They are smart, these business people. Now, if they need help with funding, federal grants or whatnot, or state grants, we should be able to help them. But when we should set the zoning and we should work the industrial parks, I was on the board before when we started working on that industrial park by the airport and extending the runway. I was there for that. So I I'm familiar with what needs to be done. And I I look forward to the opportunity to continue to help business in the area. One of the weaknesses that we have here, and we've always had here, is workforce. They need a workforce. When Ryback, Cyback was forming, they they were, had to train their own people. There was no training facility for those people. So we're asking a lot. And another thing we need to bring into business is we need broadband to come here. I think broadband is is here partially, but it can, there's a lot of areas where people live out in in the boonies, and they don't have any kind of reception at all as far as broadband. So I'm I'm looking for that to happen. And I think with the big box stores coming here and whatnot, I think the people are starting to see the opportunities here in Citrus County that's for them. And I think you will see broadband come, and then you'll see the workforce. If we can keep some of our young people here and the workforce with the the with Lakouchi Training Facility there, I think you'll see it as changing. I hope so. I'm cautiously optimistic.
Thank you. Our next question, we'll start with Rebecca Bayes.
Do you support requiring substantial build-out of existing platted residential lots before rezoning other properties for residential development?
Again, that goes back to property rights. I don't think you have an option. I think if somebody comes in and wants to put their investment dollars in and develop subdivision, that's what America's about. It's about risk management, taking your your money, your time, and your opportunity. And if that, and if it fits within our parameters and meets the criteria and gets approved, I have no problem with that. I, it's not that I like it all the time. But again, we are America, and that's what we're built on. We're built on the fact that we take our dollars, our investment, and we risk it. And any, any business out there, that's what you're in business for, is you're in business for a return. And so I would never stand in the way of free enterprise.
Thank you. Next is Diana Finnegan.
Yes, if if the person owns the property and it's zoned correctly, and that's what their their zone to build for, I mean, that is their their property rights, so I'd be okay with that.
Could you repeat the question?
The question was, do you support requiring substantial build-out of existing platted residential lots before rezoning other properties for residential development?
Diane Finnegan? There's, no, Stacy Worthington will be answering.
I I think the thing is, I'm asking because I don't really understand your question. There's been a lot of questions about rezoning tonight. And, you know, as far as rezoning, generally, what I would tell you is it's not a common practice. You know, typically, if if there is an existing development and it's zoned in one way, and there's another thing that wants to go to this, that is all taken into account always. You know, is it compatible? Is it something that would fit next to this type of zoning? And as far as whether or not there's a build-out percentage, that's not really part of a calculation when determining whether or not a specific application is going to be considered right now. Would I favor a build-out percentage for that? No. And the reason is because, you know, we have a lot of planned unit developments that are in phased development or set up in certain ways. And so it's not really a requirement when you're considering another application. But I'd just like to say, you know, there, I know there's this very huge concern about whether or not something that's not compatible with a surrounding residential neighborhood would be approved. And in my opinion, generally, it's not something that I would consider that I would approve. And sitting on a planning commission, I can't speak specifically. This is not to sidestep, it's just to say generally that we're not in the business of approving things that aren't compatible with the surrounding area.
Thank you. Next is Win Webb.
When it comes to, again, it's like what she just said, compatibility. I am not per se in favor of interfering with anybody's property rights. If you, depending on what you're doing. Now, if you're trying to do something that's, you're starting to put a mobile home park next to this, no, that's not going to fly. We have to use our common sense when we're dealing with property rights and understand people who have been paying taxes on their property for whatever reason or for whatever purpose they're using it for. Now, if it's something that goes way out of the the realm, then I would not be for that. And quite honestly, I've I've been in situations or seen situations in my own community where people were trying to do something that just wasn't compatible with the area around them. And so quite honestly, it would depend on the situation and the area.
Thank you. Next is John Murphy.
So if the question is that the property is zoned for X GNC, whatever it is zoned for, and the the person that wants to develop that property wants to do it within the parameters it's currently zoned for, it, I don't think it should hinge on the adjoining property. That's that takes away that property owner's property rights, right? They they bought that property for whatever reason. And if what they're trying to develop is within reason of, is what it's currently zoned for, then that should be allowed. I don't, I can't see a clear path to why it wouldn't, other than, I mean, you know, this is getting in the weeds. But, you know, if this is a regional drainage plan system of some sorts that 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 one hinges on the other, well, that's different, right? That's a, that's a different conversation. But if your question is, you know, this property is got a certain property rights to it, they want to develop it at what its current existing property rights, then they should be allowed to do that.
Thank you. Our next question, we'll begin with Diana Finnegan.
Citrus County has a lot of low-lying and flat terrain. With every major rain, we hear complaints from folks whose property have flooded. What, if any, responsibility does Citrus County have to rectify these flooding problems?
Well, last year, it was crazy because it was like they're calling it the one-hundred-year flood. And I know that the the aquifers and everything underneath the ground are still pretty heavily saturated. So a lot of people that had their properties flooded, they weren't happy because they felt like the county wasn't doing enough. I mean, from a county perspective, they they couldn't put the water anywhere. The county couldn't do that. But what I would have liked to see them do earlier is take in all these citizens' complaints and then started asking everybody that they could. And they finally did. They asked the state, and they asked FEMA and SWF MUD and everything, like, what can we do? And then there was some funding if they qualified, all that came much later. And I think the people just needed to be heard and answered. But unfortunately, I mean, I did see the county's issue with that. They they couldn't, they couldn't put the water anywhere. That being said, moving forward in the future, when there's new development, I feel like the county does have an obligation to look how developing a certain property is going to drain or run off into existing properties. And that's not all just the county, you know, that's going to be some state regulations too to offer those permitting. But we need to see where, you know, with new development, how that's draining and affecting the community.
Next is Stacy Worthington.
Last year, we had record rainfall. I live on a wetlands, and we have never flooded like that before. Our property was surrounded by water. My neighbor was kayaking in her yard across the street. But stormwater is a very big topic. What happens is, in Citrus County, a lot of our properties were developed or people put houses on before the land development code. And so now we have some standards in place where, when new development occurs, we do have drainage retention areas that are part of subdivisions and things, so we're collecting rainwater. But on those non-conforming properties from prior to the code, they don't really have any standards. And so the county has a responsibility for stormwater. In fact, we are collecting an assessed fee for stormwater on our citizens. So the thing about stormwater is it's incredibly expensive to establish, you know, stormwater systems for the countywide. And so it is our responsibility as Board of County Commissioners going forward to make sure that that's on our radar and that we are trying to initiate a plan to have some stormwater while these these properties are still not developed up to new code standards.
Thank you. Next would be Win Webb.
Actually, this is not a new issue. It's been going on since I was a little boy. And I remember when a hurricane came through and camped off the coast for three days, and it just rained thirty-nine inches in three days. I think it's still a record. I don't know. And I remember catching bass in the middle of Highway four eighty in Floral City. So you just pick up a little frog and you went, you threw it out there and you caught a bass every time. So I mean, it was, it's like shooting fish in a barrel. And so it's not something, but the state came in and the county came in, and they raised that road so that if the water got there again, it wouldn't be over. The same thing on forty-one just south by Floral Park. They raised two sections there where there were phosphate pits, and they raised them. So I mean, it is our responsibility up to a point. Currently, SWF MUD has been working on the north part of the county. They just had a, had a meeting at the library in in Crystal River. They had the maps, and they were, they're trying to decide where all these spots are that that they're having problems with on this hundred-year floodplain. They want to fix it, they want to be able to deal with it in future. Insurance companies want to know too, because your insurance company wants to know if you're building in a floodplain. And it should, they should be able to give it to you before you buy the property of of just what you're you're getting into. So I think, yes, there's a responsibility we have. Just how much, I'm not sure. But I'm sure as the people demand it, we'll be working towards it. That's because that's what you want, and that's what we're supposed to do. Thank you.
Next would be John Murphy.
So the question was, what was government's responsibility in this? And I think to start with, the government has to, I think one of the things that we are responsible for are public roads, right? I was talking with folks from another community that they were showing me photos of swales that hadn't been maintained in a serious amount of time, the amount of, the amount of buildup in the swell. And that causes a net negative effect on the property owners. So so the answer to your question is, we got to start with the public roads that we are responsible for. That's part of government is to maintain those public roads. It includes the the right-of-way, it includes the swales. The other issue you have, interestingly enough, and and I don't have the answer to, but is it is now to build on on single-family, on a plot of land, you got to bring the grade of your land up, right? The net negative effect is you might have now water discharge into your neighbor's property that then didn't have it. So so there is an evaluation that's necessary there because what you do, you know, you've got a homeowner building to the standard, right? They're told they had a, their property had to be a certain elevation. But in doing that, that has a net negative effect on the neighbors around them, and that is an issue that needs to be resolved.
Thank you. Next is Rebecca Bayes.
FEMA declares flood as hydrostatic movement of water over two acres or more. So as we talk about flood, and you have to buy a policy for it, Florida's considered a donor state. We pay more in flood insurance premiums than we ever collect. Back in, I think, twenty-twelve or twenty-thirteen, we, our population had risen to the point that we were then considered by federal government that we had to comply with the federal standards of stormwater. And that's why you have stormwater now, and we have to collect monies for that. That's why particularly, I think, a lot of our growth is on the central ridge areas to keep it out of the floodplain. And as we talk about, you know, Embar, Homosassa and Crystal River, again, I mean, as these houses are being built, we need these swells, we need these drainage stitches. I can tell you, in Sugar Mill Woods, in the Cypress Village, there were automatic swells put in there. But some of the builders and other people are filling those in, which is creating some flooding problem, problems. But we do need to continue with that. It's, it we also need to be working closer, I think, with SWF MUD to find some of those areas that I think have been filled in in our county that's natural drainage out to the Gulf.
Okay, that'll end our question and answer timeframe. We're out of time. We're going to move on to closing statements. The candidates will have two minutes for their closing statements, and we're going to be starting with Diana Finnegan.
Thank you all for coming out today and listening to us. I know it's a long couple hours, and you're probably hungry, so this means a lot because we're all working really hard just to try to do the best, in in our opinion, for Citrus County. Politicians make a lot of promises and I don't really like that because they're, they're not often kept. But I will make a commitment and some promises to you today. One, I promise to always watch over your tax dollars. For the better part of the year, I've been doing that, just looking at budgets, looking at spending, listening to the people. So that's a promise I can always make and I will understand it, not only on a Citrus County view, but how that comes down and what you're facing from a national economic level. The second thing I can promise and commit to you, that I will do my very best to work with commissioners to preserve and save our natural resources. I lost my train of thought, I'm so sorry. This has never happened. And the third and final that I will say, I will be a true voice for the people. I think people are looking for their voice, especially now more than ever, including in Citrus County, Meadowcrest, Pine Ridge, all these different areas. You want to be heard and you want your representative to speak the voice of the collective amount of people. And I promise to always do that, even when it's not popular, maybe as a politician or with developers. I think that I still believe that people are the government and that government doesn't always know best, the people always know best. So I would have you consider my experience, all the good things that I've done in Citrus County and what I can offer you in the future. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Next will be Stacy Worthington.
Thank you, everybody. Pine Ridge does not disappoint. I was here in your community a while ago, speaking with some of your residents. And after the meeting with them, I thought to myself, oh my God, if I can make it through that, I can make it through anything on this campaign. That you are some of the most informed and engaged people in our community, really caring about the issues. I love Citrus County. This is my hometown and I think every one of us up here tonight wants it to remain safe, affordable and beautiful. But what I don't want is to be here four years from now, talking about the same problems that it seems that we've been talking about over and over and over again. I have an experience in planning and growth management. And I think that with effective plans, we can move Citrus County into the future, diversify our economy, and also planning and follow-through and execution, the most important part of planning, helps keep your taxes low. It helps maintain our quality of life. And so I just hope that you will consider voting for me. And if you have any additional questions or would like additional information, please visit my website, StacyforCitrus.com. And I look forward to serving you. And the primary is on August 23rd. Thank you.
Thank you. Win Webb is next.
Thank you again for coming out. My name is Win Webb. I'm a lifelong resident of Citrus County. I'm an honorably discharged Navy veteran and a retired law enforcement officer, right here in Citrus County. I've been a county commissioner here in Citrus County. I have advanced certifications as such, and I look forward to the opportunity to serve you again. And my name is Win Webb. Please vote for me on August 23rd. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is John Murphy.
Well, thank you for hosting and thank you guys for staying to the end. Thank you so much. It is dinner time or a beer, whichever you prefer. So my name is John Murphy and I do want to be your next county commissioner. And I do feel like my experience and my, I have been on the front lines, putting my personal sweat equity into building the community that we all want for the future. I have been there trying to make sure that the county commission is being held accountable. I've been to Tallahassee and stood in front of the legislator and, and given public testimony for transparency in our government. So when we talk about our experiences, what I want you to know about my experiences is that it's firsthand, it's personal. And so I do think that building career jobs for our community is a critically important aspect of our community because of my work with the youth, because I've seen the folks that just vaporized right out of our community. They've been, they're incredibly smart young individuals, but they don't see that economic opportunity for us. And all too often, we don't have that economic opportunity because we as a community and, and our local government has stood in the way. I was part of a team that helped to get $5 million for a, out of the state, for a taxiway. Somebody talked about the industrial park in Imbress. I was part of a team that actually helped to get $5 million. So there's now connectivity between the actual airport and the industrial park. So the industrial park could be more advantageous for us, which will then in turn be an outlet for an opportunity for us to have young folks that have careers here, right in this community. So my name is John Murphy, County Commission, District 4. I ask for your vote. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next is Rebecca Bayes.
We have challenging times ahead of us. We live in a different time, a different world. I'm going to be 60 in October, never thought it would look like this. We're six department head short, we've got an administrator leaving, we've had no succession plan. I've built two businesses in this community, still have one. I live out on 581. I have a landscape tree nursery and we ship all over the southeast. I would tell you, gas prices, everything, it's, it's all impacting us. It used to be, it took about $3,500 to truck our trees over to Texas. It's now $5,500 and going up exponentially. And we don't, we can't even get a guarantee. So I have been a job creator, I have been a county commissioner. I've got a rolodex, I've worked on transportation issues and I'm going to promise you, you want me at the table. When that Suncoast Parkway comes through, when it comes on your back door here, you're going to want that landscaping and you're going to want that noise reduction. I've worked with FDOT, I've traveled every corner of this state. I've worked with, with the Kouchi Regional Water Management Group. I've worked on every corner, every part of transportation in this state. I've been appointed by the governor. I know this county, I love this county. I've got the experience, I've got the expertise, I know how to make money and I know how to save a dollar and I can represent you on that budget. And we need that five-year plan, that five-year budget is going to be the key to everything that we do in this community going forward. It would be my humble honor to have your vote on August 23rd to represent you once again.
All right, that concludes the closing statements. There's an announcement that Keith, our tech advisory, wants to give to the candidates.
Thank you. So we very much appreciate you guys showing up. And I think this has been very successful and you guys have got a chance to talk to a couple hundred people from Pine Ridge. Now, I've spoke to John Hyde, who's our president, and he's authorized me to give you the opportunity to speak to several thousand of our people in Pine Ridge. So we have technology in place which enables us to communicate with all six or 7,000 people in our neighborhood. So we have newsletters and functions. So between now and next Wednesday, we would like to give you the opportunity to write us a letter and explain to us what you're going to do about our roads, what you're going to do about our zoning and anything else you want to share. You can give me one paragraph, you can give me 10 pages, I don't care. I'm going to send it out to everybody in the neighborhood. So you have till Wednesday, you have Bill Hunter's contact information. Whatever goes to Bill will come to me and then it's going to every single person in this neighborhood. Thank you for your time.